As a preliminary matter, this is Larry Murphy, Chair of the Newbury Planning Board. Permit me to confirm that all members and persons anticipated on the agenda are present and can hear me. Planning Board members, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Peter Pagos?
Yes.
Woody Knight?
Yes.
Mary Stone?
Yes.
Scott Kinter? Scott, you're muted. Did I see you?
We know you're here.
Yeah.
Yes.
And Stephen Jones?
Yes.
Town staff, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Martha Taylor, Planning Director?
Yes.
And Kristen Grubbs, Assistant Town Planner?
Yes.
And we have for anticipated speakers, Renee Bordeaux?
She is not here yet.
Okay, we're also on Steve Sawyer?
Hello, I'm here.
Steve and Michael McNiff? Yes. He hasn't joined us yet.
Not yet.
I'm sorry?
Not yet.
This May fifteenth, twenty twenty four, open meeting of the Newbury Planning Board is being conducted remotely consistent with Chapter Two of the Acts of twenty twenty three, which extends the Governor's March twelfth, twenty twenty order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, general laws, Chapter thirty A, Section twenty, until March thirty one, twenty twenty five. This order suspends the requirement of the open meeting law to have all meetings in a publicly accessible physical location and allows public bodies to meet entirely remotely so long as reasonable public access is afforded so that the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. For this meeting, the Newbury Planning Board is convening by video conference via Zoom, as posted on the Planning Board's agenda, which can be found on the town's website and which identifies how the public may join. You may join us by going to http://backslashbackslashzoom.us and entering meeting ID number eight three two seven one four one three zero five six, passcode one zero eight seven nine zero, or by calling one nine two nine two zero five six zero nine nine and entering the meeting ID number and passcode when prompted. Please note that this meeting is being recorded and that attendees are participating by video and or telephone conference. The recording will be available on the Newbury Access YouTube channel, which can be accessed through the Planning Board's webpage on the town's website and at www.tncTV.org. Meeting materials were provided to the board members prior to the meeting for review. Applicants or their representatives may be called upon to speak and if needed, share information to the screen. Please state your intention after you've been called. Before we turn to the first item on the agenda, permit me to cover some ground rules for the effective and clear conduct of our business and to ensure accurate meeting minutes. As Chair, I will introduce each speaker on the agenda. After speakers conclude their remarks, I will go down the list of board members, inviting each by name to provide any comment, questions, or motions. Please hold until your name is called. Further, for all attendees except board members and staff, please remember to mute your computer using your mute button or on your phone hit star six to toggle mute or unmute when you're not speaking. Please use earbuds or earphones with tablets and cell phones. Please remember to speak clearly and in a way that helps generate accurate minutes. Please be aware that video participants can see you and that you should take care not to screen share your computer. Anything that you broadcast may be captured by the recording. For any response, please wait until I yield the floor to you and state your name before speaking. If board members wish to engage in discussion with other members, please do so through me, taking care to identify yourself when you wish to speak. There will be an opportunity for public comment and questions during public hearings. After board members have spoken, I will afford the public an opportunity to comment and or ask questions as follows. I will seek questions and comments through the raised, through the Zoom raised hand function. For video conference participants to raise your hand, hover over the bottom of the Zoom window below the photo gallery and click on the gray hand that appears. Please ensure your name is fully and correctly correctly displayed on the participant list. You may rename yourself by using the more function next to your name. For telephone participants to raise your hand in a Zoom meeting, hit star nine on your phone keypad. I will then allow questions and comments from members of the public who have raised their hands in the order in which they are listed, which is determined by the order in which people click on the raised hand function. Each participant will be called on to provide his or her name and address, then ask a question or make a comment. I will afford the applicant or participant or his or her representative the opportunity to reply. Your hand will be lowered when you have been given the floor for your questions. I will then continue down the list of those in the raised hand column and again afford the participant applicant or representative an opportunity to speak. Should there be a physical or electronic submittal of questions or concerns, they will be noted for the record and again, the participant applicant or representative will be afforded the opportunity to speak if the issues raised have not yet been addressed. Finally, please note that each vote taken in this meeting will be conducted by a roll call vote. And before we turn to the agenda, let me just say a quick word of welcome to Marion Scott as elected and now elected members of the Planning Board. Thank you and congratulations on your, your election on Tuesday.
Thank you, Larry.
Thank you.
I'm going to take one item out of order on the agenda. Under new business, we have a discussion on the June and July Planning Board meeting schedule. For June, as you all know, our, in every month, our normal meeting days are the, or evenings are the first and third Wednesday of the month. In June, the third Wednesday is the nineteenth, which is the holiday, the Juneteenth holiday. So we wouldn't be able to meet on that date and our first meeting, regularly scheduled meeting in July would be on July third, which is for many people, including myself, a vacation week. So I just wanted to discuss, get a sense from the board, maybe some alternate dates. My thought was to have one meeting on June twenty sixth and then just, I'm sorry, would have our regularly scheduled June meeting on the first Wednesday of the month, then instead of the nineteenth, would have a meeting on June sixth and would simply skip over the July third meeting and have one meeting in July. So I just wanted to get a sense from the board members if that works for everyone. Anyone have any thoughts about that?
Sounds like a good plan.
That works for me.
I agree.
Very good. So we'll, we'll plan on doing that. Martha, I don't think we need a formal vote on that, do we?
I don't think so, no.
Great. So yeah, we'll, we'll plan on, on that schedule. Let's see. So moving on to the public hearings, I'm sorry, we have time, don't we? The next item on the agenda are liaison reports. So why don't we turn to those? Martha, anything from the select board?
They've not been on their regular schedule because of the annual town meeting and then the election. They did meet, well, they posted the candidate's forum on the sixth as a, as a meeting, but they did have a very brief meeting this past Monday on the thirteenth to approve two clam licenses. And that was it. I believe that their next regular meeting is going to be May twenty eighth, but I'm not a hundred percent sure about that.
Okay. All right, thanks Martha. I'm sorry, was there a question? No. Next is ZBA, that's me. They have their regular monthly meeting tomorrow night. They have a continued public hearing on eighty Northern Boulevard. This is actually a neighbor's appeal from a determination by the building commissioner on a request for enforcement. And they also have a new public hearing of the thirty one Rolfe Lane for a detached accessory apartment. And the other last item on the agenda is an update on the fifty five of our Pearson Drive, the forty B project off Pearson Drive. And that's all I have for ZBA. Woody, anything from conservation?
Excuse me. Yes, conservation. We met last Tuesday, the seventh. It turned into a lengthy meeting. It was over three hours, but we had a, an extent, we had an extension. We had a enforcement, a couple enforcement orders for requests for determination of applicability of public hearing and for continued notices of intent. So it was a lengthy meeting. The only two things that really pertain to us, I guess, is, I should say, we've seen before is one Main Street, it was final, final wrap up on one Main Street in Byfield, which was a different address when we saw it, but it was one of those, I'd say, divided there and we divided there. And the other thing was the golf course, Newbury Golf Center, they're trying to the buffer zone mitigation plan, they're trying to get their enforcement order closed, so. And then we had a site lock for that as well on Monday and we'll continue with that at our next meeting. So other than that, that was it.
Okay, thanks, Woody. Martha, anything from MBPC?
The Commissioner's meeting is being held tomorrow and it will be mostly general business. There will be one guest from a group, actually two people from a group called Housing Support, providing a presentation. And then next week, the twenty third will be the Regional Planners Meeting and that will include a hazard mitigation planning update and a presentation regarding the Meramec River Early Alert Tool. So those are both the environmental program people. That's it.
Okay, thanks Martha. We've got about four minutes before the public hearing. Martha, does that give you enough time for the Planning Director's report?
Hopefully, we can give it a go anyway. As Woody mentioned, Eric Sorensen is trying to close out the, the golf center project after much time. So they've started first with the, the Conservation Commission. There's an enforcement order that needs to be lifted ideally and then they've requested a certificate of compliance. And we're aiming to have that done before this really comes to the Planning Board for, for closeout. I'll be requesting Eric and his engineer Scott to provide a copy of the ASBIL to us along with their request for closeout and then you know, take this up at an appropriate time as we see how the Conservation Commission deals with it. A few other things, the hazard mitigation plan that MBPC has been working on is now going into, they finished their, their first draft. It'll be going into public comment period starting on May twenty eighth through June twenty eighth. And so they will be working to schedule a public presentation here in Newbury for our section of it. We may try to coordinate that with the select board since the board will have to vote to approve the plan before it goes to FEMA, but I'll keep everybody updated on that. And the housing production plan, Kayla and Ian are working on, on the draft of that. I expect that will be ready in July for review. We're working on putting together the MVP, MBTA compliance application to the state as well as the submission to the Attorney General that's required for any zoning amendments. We have received a notice of intent to sell for the property at thirty fourth Central Street. So that will start going through, through that process. It's currently in Chapter sixty one A. And Kristen has been working very hard to kind of get the border to Boston going again. There have been a lot of stops and starts on that, but she convened a meeting, including folks from Mass DOT yesterday, as well as us, Patrick Reed from MBPC and Jerry Kleima, who is on the Coastal Trails Coalition, and Sean, our conservation agent, was there. And we had a productive conversation about sort of next steps and timeline and then actually took a walk out on the on the trail itself. The last time I was out there was in, in February of twenty twenty, right before the pandemic really hit. And at that point, there was a significant breach caused by a beaver dam, which seems to now have been somewhat addressed, so. Trying to figure out the next steps for moving this along in terms of design. Kristen, I don't know if there's anything you want to add to that.
No, that's great. I mean, it's, it's complicated work to have a, you know, it's really part of the East Coast Greenway, so it's all the New England states, but you know, in Massachusetts, from Boston to the New Hampshire border, it's such a big project and each town has little segments with many different partners, lots of different folks working on it. So it's just a complicated, but really very valuable and exciting project, so we'll keep you updated.
Thank you. Anything else, Martha?
No, that's it.
Okay, well, perfect timing because it's now seven fifteen, so we can turn to our first public hearing. This is a new public hearing for proposed amendments to subdivision rules and regulations and to site plan reduce submission requirements and procedures. And Woody, do you have the legal notice to read to the record?
Yes, I do, Larry. Thank you. Town of Newbury Planning Board Public Hearing Notice. Residents of the Town of Newbury and other interested persons, please note that on Wednesday, March fifteenth, twenty twenty four, at seven fifteen PM, the Newbury Planning Board will hold a public hearing remotely via Zoom to consider proposed amendments to the code of the Newbury, of the Town of Newbury, Chapter one seventeen subdivision of land and to the Planning Board's site plan review, submission requirements and procedures to add provisions to meet MS four requirements as follows. One, Chapter one seventeen subdivision of land. Article three, one seventeen dash eighteen definition, excuse me, definitive plan and one seventeen dash eighteen M. Record drawings. Add a requirement that the record drawings show all onsite stormwater controls. Two, site plan revision, site plan review submission requirements and procedures. A, application procedure. Two, pre-application conference. Add requirements for review of potential water quality impacts and for incorporation of low impact development site planning and design strategies. B, and then it says F, record drawings. Add a requirement that record drawings show all onsite stormwater controls. The text of these proposed amendments is on file with the Town Park and in the planning office, twelve Kentway, Suite one oh one, Byfield, Mass. It may be viewed on the Planning Board section of the town's website at https dot slash slash www. For more information or to obtain a digital or hard copy of the proposed amendments, contact the planning office by phone at nine seven eight four six five oh eight six two, extension three one two, or by email at planningboard@townofnewberry.org. In accordance with Chapter two of the Acts of twenty twenty three, which extends the Governor's March twelfth, twenty twenty order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, GLC thirty A twenty until March thirty first, twenty twenty five. The hearing is being conducted remotely. All persons interested or wishing to be heard relative to the proposed warning amendments are invited to participate in the hearing remotely at the designated time from their computer, tablet, or smartphone at https semicolon slash slash passcode one oh eight seven nine oh, or they can participate by telephone by calling one nine two nine two oh five six oh nine nine, US and US meeting ID eight three two seven one four, excuse me, eight three two seven one four oh one, three oh five six, or may watch the meeting live on local access cable, Channel nine at W, or at www.tncTV.org. And it says Larry Murphy, Chair, Newbury Planning Board. And this was published in the Newbury Port Daily News on Monday, April twenty ninth, and again on Monday, May sixth, twenty twenty four.
Thank you, Woody.
Yep.
So we have with us tonight Renee Bordeaux from GeoSentec. She, Renee is the stormwater consultant with the town and has been engaged to work with us on compliance with the MS four general permit requirements. Renee, I hope I'm pronouncing your last name correctly.
Yeah.
Did I get it right? Thank you. Renee, maybe you could give us a brief summary of what MS four is all about and then the recommended revisions to our bylaw, to our regulations?
Yep. So the US EPA regulates stormwater from municipalities all across the state, but specifically with the town of Newbury. Under a National Plucent Discharge Elimination System, otherwise referred to as NPT's permit, and it really governs the municipal separate storm sewer system, often referred to as MS four. Really how this permit regulates is it's based on a regulated area, which is defined by a census block. Typically, the census blocks are evaluated every ten years or so, and it's really focused on density of residents and isn't tied to like impervious cover or commercial development or industrial development or anything like that. So a portion of the town of Newbury falls within that regulated area. And under this permit, the town is required to do a multitude of things, including public, public education and outreach around stormwater management. They're required to prepare documents about stormwater management to be in compliance, but also allow the public an opportunity to comment on those documents. They're required to do an illicit discharge detection and elimination program, which really looks at reviewing the city, I mean, the town's stormwater management system, ensuring that only stormwater is entering that system and exiting that system. So really looking to ensure that no sanitary sewers are connected to it and/or that residents and commercial businesses aren't using it to dump non-stormwater things such as, you know, chlorinated pool water or washing their cars in it or dumping oil, et cetera. Also, as part of that which applies to our conversation this evening, that the, the town is required to update both their site plan review, erosion sediment control regulations, as well as their post-construction stormwater regulations, again, to ensure that their, you know, that development is, is protecting the waterways and not discharging stormwater into the system that's untreated, which could be a further maintenance burden for the town and ultimately for the receiving waters. And then finally, there's an operation and maintenance component to it as well that requires the town to maintain catch basins, conduct street sweeping, and then maintain any stormwater best management practices that are on town properties. So that's just a general overview of the MS four permit. And I don't know, Martha, if you just wanted me to go over the, the comments. I know that Woody kind of just went through what they are. They're, they're fairly minor in nature. So I don't know if that'd be helpful. If anyone has any questions on sort of why we're here? I will say, I mean, really, the purpose of tonight is, you know, the town is required to update their regulations, both the site plan and subdivision, to make sure they're in accordance with this MS four permit. And so the regulations that we've, the amendments we've proposed to the regulations will bring the town in compliance with the MS four permit. They're fairly minor in nature. I would say that the, the more substantial amendments will come to the stormwater ordinance, which will be taken before the Conservation Commission, I believe, at the beginning of June. But the ones before us this evening really are focused on, in both the site plan and subdivision, is just updating the record drawings such that when applicant, applicants submit record drawings to the town, it makes sure it reflects all the stormwater management controls that are on site. I believe there was a provision previously which has indicated, you know, rain gardens, detention ponds, et cetera. And so we just want to beef that up a little bit to make sure that everything's included. And then finally, there's sort of some amendments to the pre-application conference that happens during the site plan review process and just ensuring during that pre-application conference that the town is talking to the applicant about some of the improvements to water quality impacts that need to happen on the site as well as the ensuring that they're incorporating low impact development design strategies with their projects.
Thank you, Renee. Martha, can we share to the screen the proposed amendments?
Renee, do you have those available to share or?
I do.
Okay, otherwise I can pull them up, but if you've got them handy, that would be great.
Do, do you have a preference which we start with?
No, whatever you're comfortable with.
Okay.
Yeah. Whatever comes first.
Yeah. Let me make sure site plan. We'll start with the site plan ones. And I'll zoom in here a little bit for folks to see. Okay. So I'm just going to kind of scroll through this quickly. There really aren't a lot of changes to it. There are, they are redlined, so I'm just going to scroll down to where that red line is. So the first location is under the application procedure. Again, this is focused around the pre-application conference. So again, we're adding some language that during those pre-applications for both the Level One, which is a minor project site plan review and Level Two, a major project site plan review, we're adding some language that during that, during that process that the applicant will meet with the town planner and review the requirements for the site plan approval, including potential water quality impacts and incorporation of low impact development site planning and design strategies. And so that's reflected in both the Level One and the Level Two. And then we'll jump down to the records drawing section. And again, previously, there was a number seven which indicated locations of rain gardens, constructed wetlands, detention ponds, and similar facilities. This is kind of getting at the stormwater clause, but the, the MS four permit had pretty specific language with exactly what, how they wanted that to read. And so essentially, we just copied that language. We basically replaced the old number seven with a new number seven that states all onsite stormwater controls, both structural and non-structural, designed to manage the stormwater associated with the completed site, AKA storm, post-construction stormwater management. And those are the only amendments to the site plan regulations.
Thank you, Renee. Let me turn to the board members now and ask, does, do any of the members have any questions or comments about the amendments to site plan review? I'm not hearing any. I don't have any either. Thank you, Renee. I think you can probably move on to subdivision regulations then.
This one has less edits, so. Let me start at the top. I think they're pretty far down, so I may want to start at the bottom here. Oops. So this update is just to the record drawing section. Oh boy, did I go past it? Sorry.
You're actually still in site plan review is what we're seeing on, on the screen.
Oh, really? Okay, I'm sorry. I have to unshare. I'm sorry. I apologize. I didn't, I thought I shared my whole screen, but I didn't.
Yeah, that's okay.
Stop share. All right, let me get to the section in here so you don't have to watch me scroll.
Yeah, it is pretty far down.
Yeah. Okay, here I have it here. I'll scroll up a little bit so we can review the section title. Okay. All right. Share screen. Subdivision regulations, share. Okay. So this is under one seven, let me see here, it's under section L, which is the release of the performance guarantee. So again, scrolling down to the record drawing section. We've added a number seven here, which again is the same record drawing condition that we just discussed for the site plan review regulations. Again, I'll zoom in here a little bit. I understand this is a little small. And again, it's that all the onsite stormwater controls, both structural and non-structural, designed to manage the stormwater associated with the completed site, post-construction stormwater controls, again, be added on the record drawings before submittal to the town. And that's the only update to the subdivision regulations.
Okay, thank you, Renee. Again, to the board members, any questions for Renee on this? Or anything else for that matter, I suppose, at this point? I'm not hearing none. I think you can probably stop screen sharing then, Renee.
Yep.
So why don't we turn to the public? Martha, have there been any written comments received?
No, haven't raised, no.
And do we have any members of the public with raised hands out there?
I am not seeing any.
Okay. Then let me turn back to the board members and ask if we're ready to consider a motion on the acceptance, excuse me, accepting these amendments. PD?
Sure, I'd be happy to make that motion.
Okay, we could.
Site plan review and the subdivision regulations.
I'm sorry, could, could you repeat that?
Sure, it'll be for both the site plan review and the subdivision regulations.
Okay, as presented?
Yes.
Okay. Martha, you that's sufficient for our needs?
I think so. And that's, Renee, do you have any sense, would it be better if the board adopted each of them separately? Or do you think combining is fine?
I think combining is fine.
Okay.
Okay, so the motion then to recap is to adopt the revisions to the subdivision rules and regulations into site plan review as presented. So, fair Pete?
That's fair.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
I'm not sure who I heard first. I think it was Mary.
Woody was first.
Okay, then Woody was first. Thank you, Mary. Any, any discussion on the motion? Okay, then how do you vote on the motion, Pete?
Yes.
Woody, how do you vote on the motions?
Yes.
Scott, how do you vote on the motion? Mary, how do you vote on the motion?
Yes.
Steve, have any, anything to add?
No, I do not. Thank you.
All right, I vote yes as well, so. I think we're all set on this. Thank you, Renee.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have a great night.
Okay.
Actually, one, one more thing, if we may. Renee, there is one more step that will have to be taken, but at town meeting, correct the revisions to the bylaw itself.
Yes.
Yep. To site plan review by law, but, but the, basically, the intention is the same or the outcome is the same.
Yep. So that will happen next year.
But what we voted on tonight are just the regulations.
Yes.
Yeah. Okay, great. Thank you again.
All right, thank you. I'll take care.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda, I'm sorry.
Do you want to vote to vote to close the public hearing?
Oh, I'm good. Yes, thank you, Martha. I entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Thank you, Mary. Thank you, Woody. Any discussion? Then on the motion, Pete, how do you vote?
Yes.
Woody, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mary, how do you vote?
Yes.
Scott, how do you vote?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well. Thank you. For catching me, Martha.
Welcome.
Next, we have a continued, something you're getting used to, I know by now.
You do a great job, Larry.
Thank you.
Yes, you.
I would have started the public hearings at seven oh five. Martha hadn't caught me. So next on the agenda is a continued public hearing for Seven Bittersweet Lane map. U O nine lot twenty-one B common driveway special permit application. Owner David W Foley, senior, and Nancy J Foley, and the applicant Gage Foley. And just to remind you, the only voting members on this, members eligible to vote are myself, Pete, Woody and Mary. So let's see, we met, last met on this on April seventeenth and we had a discussion about the need to up, update the ownership information and the easement agreement, the easement exhibit and the draft decision to reflect current ownership. And Steve Sawyer, can you bring us up to, up to speed?
Yeah, good evening, Steve Sawyer with GM two. Excuse me. Yeah, so it took a little bit, but we got the easement figure has been updated reflecting the new ownership and the new configuration, new configuration of the non-common driveway easement, just for the portion of seven, or the portion on nine that serves seven. So that figure was updated and also Matt Gaines updated the document. We got those to Martha today, so I guess at this point, I believe it's just that the final documents need to be reviewed by town council and hopefully that's it. I think that, and then Martha, correct me if I'm wrong, I think that's the only outstanding items on this.
I believe that's correct, right? So we will do an internal, you know, staff review. I found a few things in the easement agreement this afternoon when I went through it and then we'll send it on to council for review. And the board had requested previously that we send the decision along with it to council for review, so we have that in form right now. But that needs to also be revised to reflect the ownership as it currently stands.
Oh, the decision, okay.
The decision does, yeah.
Any questions from the board? No? Hearing none, Martha, any public comment, either written or raised hands tonight?
None written and no raised hands.
So unless there are any further questions or comments from the board members, the next steps would be to staff to review the revised documents and then provide them to town council for review, along with the revised draft decision. And I guess we would need now a motion to continue the public hearing to a future date. Steve, do you have any preference on a future date?
I, yeah, I don't. I have a feeling trying to get it all done in two weeks into the board, everything into the board is that, you know, and it really is, there's not a tremendous amount of pressure. There's, you know, it's not holding anything up right now, so instead of, I'm thinking, what was it, the second June meeting?
That June twenty-sixth.
Yeah, does that, Martha, does that make sense to you? Or do you think we can get it all done in a couple of weeks?
I think that might be safer, only knowing that, you know, town council is still in the midst of annual town meetings with all of her communities, things like that, so.
Yep.
And that might have an opportunity for some back and forth if there needs to be any, so that might be safer.
Perfect, okay.
All right, then I would entertain a motion to continue this public hearing until our meeting on June twenty-sixth at seven fifteen PM via Zoom. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Woody. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mary. Any discussion? And hearing none, Pete, how do you vote on the motion?
Yes.
Woody, how do you vote on the motion?
Yes.
Mary, how do you vote on the motion?
Yes.
Scott, how do you vote on the motion?
Just that's not a voting member.
I'm sorry.
I don't think I can vote on this one.
Oh, I'm sorry. You're right. You're right. My bad. I vote yes as well, so it's unanimous with the four voting members. Thank you, Scott, pointing that out. All right, next we have under Old Business, one oh five High Road Seagate. Steve Sawyer representing the applicant request for approval of the Planting Plan at Unit nine and also a request for partial release of the funds held in the tripartite agreement. And if we all recall from our last meeting, the board had reviewed the request, decided to defer action until tonight. And we scheduled a site walk, which he held on the thirteenth of May. And we do have an opinion from Joe Sowak, our peer review engineer, that the requested release of funds was reasonable, but suggested that the board might want to hold some additional funds to cover the retaining wall and planting on Unit nine. So Steve, I think that's an accurate summary of where we're at. Do you have anything further to add?
Uh, no, I don't. The only, I guess, he actually said the board may want to discuss. He didn't recommend either way, but I imagine, yeah, I, my feeling is I'm sure you got, that you would probably feel more comfortable with holding money, which we have no exception to that. So we added thirty-five thousand dollars into the withholding in, added thirty-five to be held for that.
Okay, so turn to the board members, any questions, comments?
Steve, approximately how many, I guess, face square feet of wall at number nine? Any idea, ballpark?
Uh, let's see. I don't know. I have to say around two hundred and forty.
Two hundred and forty, face feet?
Face feet.
Yeah, I mean, my comment would be, I think that's more than enough.
It might, yeah. The holdback, Scott, you're talking about.
Okay. Anything else, Martha, anything you want to add?
No, I don't think so.
Well, let's, let's take them separately then, because we have two separate issues here. First of all, would anyone care to move to approve the planting plan prepared by John Neko Thompson Landscaping? It's submitted to the board by Steve Sawyer on four fifteen twenty-four. I think we've all had an opportunity to review that.
So moved.
Thank you, Mary. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Woody. Any discussion? And I think we're all eligible to vote on this, Martha. Am I correct?
Uh, yes, it's not a hearing, so yes.
All right, Pete, how do you vote on the motion?
Yes.
Woody, how do you vote on the motion?
Yes.
Mary, how do you vote on the motion?
Yes.
Scott, how do you vote on the motion?
Yes.
And Steve, Manjoe, any, anything you'd like to add?
No, I do not have anything to add. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Steve. All right, so the motion, and I vote yes as well, so the motion passes unanimously to approve the landscaping plan. And next, Steve, I believe what you're asking for is for the savings bank to release sixty-nine thousand two hundred and eighty dollars from the secured funds being held by the bank. Well, the, for one oh five High Road, under the terms of the tripartite agreement, the developer in town reducing the secured amount to two hundred and twenty thousand two hundred and eighty dollars. Is that accurate?
That is accurate, yes.
Okay. And I, I think we've all had an opportunity to see the Steve's middle. I don't think it's necessary to put it on the screen. Any further discussion on that point?
Would you like a motion?
I'm sorry?
Would you like a motion?
Yes, please.
There you have it.
All right, thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second, I think that was Mary's time.
Yes. You have a second, third and fourth.
Okay. And Martha, you have the language for the motion. Okay, I kind of fumbled through it.
I do, and we have, we have a template for the actual certificate of vote, so yes.
Okay, thank you. Then any further discussion and hearing none, Pete, how do you vote?
Yes.
Woody, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mary, how do you vote?
Yes.
Scott, how do you vote?
Yes.
Steve, any thoughts? Okay, I vote yes as well, so.
Steve, you're muted.
You are muted, Steve, but.
Thank you. I'm unmuted, but no comments.
Okay, thank you. And I, I think from the site walker, that there's some issue with grading changes at unit two. Is that going to have to come back before the board?
I, I guess, so I submitted a, so we went and discussed it on the, we were sort of discussed the layout at the property the other day. Excuse me, and I submitted a plan to, I submitted a plan to Martha today, basically documenting that six-inch curb as we run it around the left side of the cul-de-sac and with the two-foot wall to flatten out the backyard or the backyard of unit, unit two. So I get, I, I think, Martha, your intention is for us to come back on that, or does, did the board see, I guess, on the site visit, did you, right off the bat, did you see any issues with that? Any, any?
I mean, I, I didn't see any issues with it, and I would think that could fall within the purview of Martha within, I think you would call that administrative change. But I'd be interested to hear what everybody else thinks.
Yeah. Would, would be, it could just be considered a field change or a minor modification that would have to come back.
Right. I mean, typically with all these grading changes that have happened on, at all the units, basically, we've, we've asked Joe to review the proposed changes, give us his feedback, and then the board has voted to determine whether it's a minor modification and approvable or something that seems more significant, so.
Okay. With Joe and Steve.
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay. Very good. So Steve, I think we're done for tonight, unless you, is anything you'd like to add?
So procedurally, I guess, as far as for Ben and Maggie to get the release, Martha, do you send that off to them to bring to the, I'm not sure how that works, but I just want to let them know when they could expect that.
Right, so we can probably pull that together tomorrow. I think, though, let me just pull up the previous one here. Bear with me for a second. I think that it may, it needs to be signed by by the board members and one of their signatures needs to be notarized. That's what we've done in the past. So we did that with the yeah, the release that was.
That might take a few days.
It would probably take into, into next week.
Okay, all right.
But we'll, we'll get it done as fast as we can.
Okay, and then as far as you're going to have Joe review the grading change on unit two?
Yes, yeah.
Okay. Very good.
Yeah. Yeah. So I, I think I anticipate putting that on the, on the next agenda, you know, just to kind of run it by the board and get, you know, everybody's comfort with his, after we get Joe's comments back.
Okay.
Okay, very good. I guess we could move on. So next item on the agenda is under New Businesses, one seventy Orchard Street Fields Way. Michael McNiff is with us, let's see. And Mike, can you, I think we're looking for a project status update and then a discussion regarding the approval of the performance covenant. So, Mike, let me turn it over to you.
Oh, great. Thank you, everybody. I appreciate you all being here. It's good to see you. Martha, I, I think we forwarded the Form D covenant. I know that Mrs. Yurkovich on one half signed, and I know that Mr. Casey on half of the Essex Aggie signed. I don't know if you forwarded you the notarized signature of Mr. Casey. Did you get that? Second, no, okay, I'm sorry. We, I was on a flight, so I was trying to arrange that, but we have it. We'll send it along tomorrow. As far as the, the farm's going, I believe Mr. Herrick is planting corn, so we don't anticipate anything happening on the project, at least until the chapter sixty-one. The quarterback, the ball has been tossed around from different attorneys, but it's going to be Mr. Sheehan, who represents the Essex Aggie, who will be sending along the notice for the chapter sixty-one. I happened to forward to Martha, just, it was a draft that we had just received a few days ago, Martha. I know there's some documentation numbers from Bob that we have to put in there. And the purchase and sale, even though it's continually been extended, we're trying to, we'll have a cleaner one when we submit the chapter sixty-one, which will make it free of any contingencies, which I believe was one, one of the requisitions. And I have a feeling he's going to be submitting that, if not Friday, it'd be the first of the week. So we're assuming that's four months, a hundred and twenty days anyways. Enough time Mr. Herrick would probably farm the corn, so there probably wouldn't be a conveyance until September at this point. It might even go into October. I have not talked to Greenbelt today in regards to the best time to conveyance. I have broached it with the two attorneys, and I think as soon as they release, and I think they're going for half of the property to be released, the other, or the share that's going to Greenbelt will stay in the protected tax forms. And I would assume both parties, both parcels would be conveyed out at the same time from the seller to the entity that's buying the development as well as Greenbelt. As far as I can say, I think that's pretty much touches most of the bases.
Okay, thanks. Martha, and anything you wanted to add?
So just a question, so the, the sixty-one A notice is being drafted to kind of take into account that part of the parcel is being conveyed to Greenbelt and.
As far as I understand, that is the, that is the way they're going to propose it, that the part being sold from the development end will be taken out. I think we did receive a couple of months back from the assessor, and I don't think they have a buyback fee because it's been in, it's been in protective for so long, been farmed for so long. I may be wrong on that, but I'm pretty sure that was the case. But to short answer your question, I think they were going to leave it. Greenbelt was leaving it in, in the protected status.
Okay, well, we'll, we'll see what the draft is when we get it.
Okay. That just came out this week. It took a while for them to decide which, as you know, there are multiple sellers, which, which one was going to handle it. And I apologize, Mr. Sheehan represents Mrs. Yurkovich. I said Essex Aggie, that was incorrect. And Mr. Sheehan from, will be handling the chapter sixty-one notice.
Okay. Thank you. Um, so going back, sorry, Larry, go ahead.
No, you go ahead.
So going back to the Form D performance covenant, I believe in the past, before the board can actually endorse the plans, we have received from, you know, from the property owner, a, the Form D, which has been both. we have received from um, you know, from the property owner, a, the Form D, which has been both so signed and notarized by them as well as recorded at the registry. So, and then the recording information gets placed on the um, on the plans to be endorsed, if I recall correctly. So we don't, you know, we don't quite have that in hand, but.
You wanted us to record the Form D, Martha?
Um, that's typically what, what's been done. We've received a recorded version from, from the sellers. Okay. From, from the.
Well, it's still going to have to be reviewed by town council, right?
Well, the Form, the Form D, I think, is, is pretty straightforward. It's based on a version that she's reviewed in the past. I mean, that's just, that's the performance covenant, so.
Okay. But if I understand correctly, before we can sign the plan, now, let me step back a little bit. I understand that the appeal period has has run in both a definitive subdivision and the common driveway special permit. But before um uh, before we can sign the plan, we have to have the performance guarantee in place. Is that your understanding?
Yes.
So let me turn to the board members. Any, any questions or comments?
So just clarification, Form D to us, um, and then uh, the performance guarantee. And then we act on that. Is that correct?
Right, the, the, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, and the, the board has already um approved in the, the former performance guarantee is up to, you know, up to the applicant, so, and they have said that they would like to use the Form D, the performance covenant. The board has already approved doing that and has seen the, the, the language. So the last part of that is really to get it signed and notarized and recorded, then we know, the board knows it's in place and can endorse the plans.
Then um at this point, uh, I, I think it would be appropriate, uh, if anyone cared to move uh to endorse the plan upon receipt of fully executed and recorded Form D. You comfortable with that, Martha?
That sounds good.
Okay, do I have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Woody. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mary. Any further discussion? Then hearing then, Pete, how do you vote?
Yes.
Woody, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mary, how do you vote?
Yes.
Scott, how do you vote?
Yes.
Steve, anything to add?
Sounds good. Thank you.
Yeah, I vote yes as well. All right, so I guess we're moving forward with this and uh thank you, Michael, unless there's anything else. Uh, Martha, we can move on.
Yes.
Okay, thank you, everybody, for your time. Good night.
Michael.
Thank you.
And the last item on the agenda are the items, I guess I should say, the planning board meeting minutes from April seventeenth into May first. Let's take the seven, April seventeenth first. Has everyone had an opportunity to review the draft minutes?
Yes.
All right, are there any questions or comments on the April seventeenth draft minutes? Or hearing, would anyone care to move to approve the April seventeenth, twenty twenty-four minutes?
Motioned.
Okay, I don't know.
Mary, Mary is, Mary is running to win. She shot.
I'm sorry, Scott.
Mary is ahead. I mean, she's just, uh.
Mary's ahead. All right, we'll give it to Mary. Do we have a second?
I'm pushing the button.
Second.
Uh, thank you, Scott. The second, any discussion? All right, hearing then, Pete, how do you vote on the motion?
Yes.
Woody, how do you vote on the motion?
Yes.
Mary, how do you vote on the motion?
Yes.
Scott, how do you vote on the motion?
Yes.
Steve, you have any thoughts about the April seventeenth minutes?
Nothing to add. Thank you.
Thank you. And I vote yes as well. May first, twenty twenty-four, I have a minute, so we all had an opportunity to review those.
Yes.
I'm gonna assume that we have, uh, would anyone care to make a motion to approve the May first, twenty twenty-four meeting minutes as presented? Now, everybody's getting shy on me. Was that, was that a motion, Woody?
Yes.
Okay, do we have a second?
Woody, stop for a second.
All right, thank you, Mary. Any discussion? All right, then uh Pete, how do you vote on the motion?
Yes.
Woody, how do you vote on the motion?
Yes.
Mary, how do you vote on the motion?
Yes.
Scott, how do you vote on the motion?
Yes.
Steve, anything to add?
I'm all smiles. Thank you.
Okay, thanks. I vote yes as well. So the May first um uh meeting minutes are also approved. And that's it. So would anyone care to move to adjourn?
So moved.
Thank you, Scott. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you, Pete. Any discussion? Hearing then, Pete, how do you vote?
Yes.
Woody, how do you vote?
Yes, and good night, everyone.
Mary, how do you vote?
Yes, and thanks, everybody.
Scott, how do you vote?
Yes, and good night, Woody.
And Steve, good night, and I vote yes as well. Thanks, everyone.
Good night.
Thanks, guys.